Okay, everyone. We have a public hearing we want to start with. Tina Cole, it's all yours.
My name's Tina Cole. I'm with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District here in Harrison. We serve nine counties and 72 cities. My division or department, we do economic and community development, which is helping cities and counties find funding for projects. And in 2015, we were owed a grant and was awarded one to write a hazard mitigation plan for Boone County. And as part of that process, we need to hold a public hearing, so we're doing that here. A little background, is anyone familiar with what a hazard mitigation plan is? I feel like I hate my back.
I had to look in the dictionary, what the definition of mitigation is. Oh, that sounds weird. What in the world is that? And the literature paper never said what it actually did. I didn't believe that.
The dictionary, you're right. But the low and easy definition is if you've got a low water crossing that floods every time it rains, if it landlocks people out where they can't get home, then to mitigate that problem, we're going to build that lower crossing up or put in a bridge or fix it so that it doesn't keep people from getting to their homes or damaging their cars or things like that. Another mitigation project that people associate with this plan is safe rooms, especially the schools. That's what their plan is for. But also, there's community shelters that can be built with mitigation. And once we get the plan developed and adopted by the cities within Boone County and the county, then that makes you eligible for mitigation plans, about 75% of any project, mitigation project that we develop out of the plan.
Okay, so what's the definition of this? You're saying it solves problems within the community. What is the action within there?
Well, the definition from FEMA is sustained actions taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from hazards and the effects of those. We're just going to fix a problem so that it'll reduce damages to property or, you know, the risk to people's lives.
I can see it on the drawing, saying that's definitely something.
And if we build a safe room in the community and the tornado comes through, it saves people's lives, that we've mitigated that risk.
Okay, staying out of risk, I mean, whatever.
That helps?
That helps. It's better than what we had.
Good. But so, you know, we're just going to develop a plan for the county and the cities. All the cities are part of the jurisdictions that are part of the community. And just a little historical data, from 2000 to 2016, Boone County. Any events of drought, 32 of flash flooding that are recorded, 89 episodes of hail, six heavy snow, four ice storms, 83 thunderstorms and windstorms that caused damage, four tornadoes, and 61 thunderstorms or severe weather. And the damages estimated for all of those events was $60 million, $82,000 to the county. So hopefully, with some mitigation projects, we can reduce public damage. For this public video, exciting to you, please make sure you come and you go to the public.
Mayor Gene Krieger.
Race.
Mitch Magnus.
President.
Linda DeWolff.
President.
Bill Boswell.
Present.
Keith Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Present.
Wayne Cowan.
Present.
All right. Pastor, stand for prayer and end the pledge.
All right, would you join me in prayer? God, we just thank you for your grace upon the city of Harrison. God, we ask for your hand to be with the communities, our neighbors, that have had damage and floods and tornadoes. And God, be with the first responders, those who are searching and rebuilding. God, I pray that those communities would draw closer together and, Lord, that your grace would be upon them as they begin to rebuild and to heal. And, Lord, we just thank you for what you've done in our lives. Thank you for the wisdom to be in these positions, to govern the city, give us wisdom to guide us and make decisions. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start with the department reports, and we have a request for approval of the minutes. Thank you, Jeff.
Michael Murch, we approve the minutes presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, approved. Now, we'll go to the department reports, and Chuck Edding to announce it to me first tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go first. Couple of things. First, I want to thank Wade and Public Works and the Street Department for helping us during the state regional tournaments, for helping us park and unplug the fields. We couldn't have got them like we did without them, so I just want to publicly thank them for their help. Next, the light pole inspection we're having from Timber Products is going to be on June the 4th. That will be when I get more info and the recommendation from them on how many light poles we need to replace when, and how many of them are unsafe and kind of like we did the last time, when we need to replace those. That could be a danger unsafe to the public. The next thing is, I got some bad news. The dog park grant we were going after was pushed to May of 2020, the one we were looking at going after. So I want to keep looking, but I actually went out today with Jerry Quinlan, the head maintenance guy. I talked to the mayor. We're looking at either an 80 by 200-foot dog park, or we looked today and measured off where we're looking at putting it down behind the soccer complex, maybe 125 by 125 with two sections, one for small dogs and one for larger breed dogs. So I'm pricing the fencing right now at five foot. I should have more info on that next week. But we have kind of laid it out in two different ways so we can kind of look and see which one we're going to do. But we're definitely going to try to have it finished in August. That's our goal, is to get it finished by August. And I'm going to go out and work and try to raise money. I had lots of calls for interest and that, so I'm going to go get with those people and try to get this done by August. So I'm pretty excited. So I'm still going to be looking for grants to try to help us pay, and I can apply for that one in 2020. It's only going to be for 5,000 if we already have one now, so I really want to get that done because I think it's a need. I think the mayor's right. We've made lots of, since he's brought it up, it's been a hot item at parks, so we'll get that done.
Chuck and I were talking last night about it, whether to be five feet high or six feet high, and I said, well, let's call the mayor. And we called the mayor in Batesville. That's kind of my go-to mayor. And we asked him, do you have a dog park? He says, it's funny you ask. We're building one right now. And so, how high is a mare? And he says, we've studied that a lot. It's going to be five foot high. So I think we determined five foot, and then he went on to say that somebody in the community wanted it and got behind it, went out and raised $43,000 to build this dog.
In four weeks.
Yeah, in four weeks. So we're not going to spend $43,000, but hopefully Chuck can come up with the funds and we can get on with it. It's kind of been on hold, hoping to get a grant, and that didn't happen.
We're still working on it. We'll make it the best we can make it. We want it to be nice one, and I think it can be. We just got to figure out how we want to lay it out, where we have it up now and the price of fencing. So that's where we're at. That's all I have. Do you have any questions? Thank you all. I got to head back out to the conference.
Okay, Chuck, thank you. Okay, Chief Grady. This is going to be exciting again, folks.
All right. We've been busy the last few months. There in front of you, we have the monthly report. Of course, that's always a month behind, so this is the totals for April. I'll just go over them real quick. If you have any questions, you can ask. Accidents worked. Month of April was 27. There was one fatality accident year-to-date. That puts it at one fatality, and that's where we were at the same time last year. Citations issued. The month of April was 267. Last year-to-date, we had 689. This year-to-date, we have 1,123. Warnings issued. Year-to-date, this year, 2,069. Last year was 1,382. Our total calls for service is up this year. Last year, we were at 7,086. This year, we're at 7476. So we're running about, I think Chief Kayle said that average, about 62 calls a day. The next page there is our school resource officer report. We had counseling sessions with four students, conferences with 10 different parents, eight with faculty and staff. We had 41 classroom lectures. There was eight home visits. The next three pages is all criminal investigation division. The mayor and I have actually talked about this. We hope next month to have a little more information as far as the history, year-to-date for the last year, not only just this year. And maybe that will help explain some of this because some of these, we have cases worked. Well, right here, we worked 15 cases year-to-date of larceny. We've closed 28. Well, how is that possible? Like I've said before, it's cases that happened last year or the previous months. But we're trying to make that a little more user-friendly, working on that. Property reported stolen for April was 29,690. We recovered 723,78. For year-to-date, property reported stolen, 127,000. We recovered 90,000. Narcotics seized for April was $3,765. Property seized was $8,000. I know that shows one arrest. That's a little bit misleading. Some arrests that we can't disclose as of yet, obviously, for May, but next month, we should be able to release that information. Year-to-date, 48,124 dollars worth of narcotics were seized, and, well, the property was in April, so that's the same. Warrants division, 302 warrants were served in April of 2019. Year-to-date, we've served 770 warrants. And next page is animal control. Answered 101 calls in April. He's at 374 for the year. Our community engagement officers, they had contact with 44 businesses during the month of April. They covered extra patrol and residence checks on 27 different locations. Total number of people they reached through the different events there that they've attended, 3,255. And we also had 64 school visits from our two community engagement officers. Something that's not in this report that, like I said, we're working to change, we actually had 97 physical arrests in the month of April. That's not just like a ticket is considered an arrest, but that's where we actually put them in custody and brought them down to either post bond or incarceration. Out of those 97, there was 21 drug arrests. One more thing I wanted to touch on here, we've had crawdad days here in the last week or so. We rearranged some personnel. We've always had a big overtime expense from crawdad days, and I think, Mr. Largen, I think everything went fine this year as far as security and everything.
Tremendous.
Right. We actually cut that back a little bit, and we, compared to last year, we've saved $3,000 in overtime. So that's something that we've tried to work on in order to cut some expenses. In the last three weeks, we've had some narcotics arrests that I wanted to share with you. Like I said, our monthly reports are a month behind, but this was in the last three weeks. I have some totals and figures just to show you what some of our patrolmen, our narcotics division, and our K-9 division's been able to do. Is this ready for me? Okay. All right. This first slide right here, this is a stop made by a K-9 officer. There was six grams of methamphetamine, 19 pills, obviously drug paraphernalia and scals, and a firearm, and $130 that was seized, and that's off a K-9 stop. The next slide right here, this is actually a county stop. Sheriff's deputy had made a stop, and I'm not sure if their K-9 was not available. They have requested assistance from us. Our K-9 officer went out, done a K-9 search of the vehicle, and had a positive response. That's two grams of methamphetamine that was taken off a traffic stop. This right here is the results of a search warrant involving our 14 judicial district drug task force and our Harrison Police Department Narcotics Division. We've got a little over 80 Xanax pills, a little over $200. We have four firearms, and there was three ounces of marijuana that was seized on this search warrant. That was here in town. This right here is the results of a search warrant involving our 14 judicial district drug task force and our Harrison Police Department Narcotics Division. We've got a little over 80 Xanax pills, a little over $200. We have four firearms, and there was three ounces of marijuana that was seized on this search warrant. That was here in town. This is actually the first of two slides. This is a traffic stop that was made by patrol. One of our regular patrolmen, not K-9 and not narcotics, just an officer that he done an excellent job on this, and I wanted to highlight this. He got a half a gram of meth, which a gram of meth's roughly $100. So he got a half a gram of meth, but he, more importantly, got 43 grams of heroin. This is the second time we've had heroin since I've been here. It's sad to see that, but unfortunately, it's starting to come in just a little bit. The heroin runs about $40 per tenth of a gram, so that's $120 worth right there on that scale. It's a little over that 43,2 grams. And, but, like I said, that was a patrol officer, one of our young patrolmen actually. He's done a good job, and I was proud of his stop and his arrest there. All right. Y'all may ask, well, hey, what's that? That's a Pringles can. Yeah, that's a Pringles can. But if y'all noticed, there's a false bar in that. And inside that Pringles can was quite a bit of methamphetamine, about $14,500 worth of methamphetamine. This was the results of a home visit through probation of parole. Our Harrison narcotics officers along with DTF officers went to this was a location here in Harrison. And that's five and a half ounces of methamphetamine, $1,700 in cash, six pills, and obviously some drug paraphernalia. So that was a real good arrest right there. That's quite a bit of meth. All right, our next slide here, this is another home visit where they involved the narcotics DTF and our K-9 officers. K-9 actually hit on the card, and that's three quarters of an ounce of marijuana. That's a drug paraphernalia. This next one is a traffic stop by a K-9. That's 3.7 grams of meth. That's about $370 and a set of brass knuckles. All right. This is an indoor grow that was here in Harrison. We actually got information on this residence from a call that was made to the DHS hawker. There was two elementary aged children living in this residence. I wouldn't want an animal of mine living in this residence. Thankful that we got there, we got the children removed, they got into DHS custody. That's the best thing that happened out of this arrest right here. But that's 14 plants. They're all valued at $1,000 a plant when they reach maturity. There was also five firearms that they had there. So as you can see, the narcotics and weapons, firearms go hand-in-hand, and that is, that's the last three weeks. The last three weeks, the totals on what I've showed you right here was $14,870 worth of methamphetamine that we seized, $795 worth of pills, $14,950 worth of marijuana, 10 firearms, $120 worth of heroin, and $2,030 worth of cash. And that was just the last three weeks from our narcotics and patrol and our K-9 division. That's just some of the stuff that won't be out until next month that I thought y'all might like to see. And does anyone have any questions regarding any monthly reports or any of this here?
Absolutely. I'd like to tell you that recently, I've had the opportunity to work with your school resource officers. They are invaluable to service that they provide to the school. I can't express to this community how much confidence and ease of mind that those men and women add to this district and this community and this school.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's unbelievable. And then in regard to these things here, showing us, it's obvious that you're having impact and your department's having an impact.
Well, the guys are working hard and they're doing a good job, and I just, once we're able to share that publicly, I want everybody to know what they're doing. They are working hard. We're going to continue to work hard. And like I said, next month, we'll be even better.
Okay, Chief. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Thank you. Sorry, Wade, you're next.
Just unless we find them while we're out, I wouldn't make that choice.
A couple of items other than what's already going to be later on the agenda. We're having tomorrow a meeting with the Arkansas Tourism Grant that is going to help fund the barrier-free playgrounds as well as the new bathrooms down there on the playground side of the park. So we'll be able to start moving forward with that a little bit more than we have, but as we've been waiting for the money to become available. And I'll just point out, Tina Cole with the Economic Development District has been integral in helping us navigate that process and get that grant. So just a little something else that she does besides working on this mitigation plan for us. Second item is, I hope you're all well aware that we received a $1.66 million grant to help fund improvements to Goblin Drive. Worked with the Economic Development District on that as well, and we've gone through the, I guess, appropriate process to design or to select a design firm. And we've gone through that. We've been notified. Hopefully, next month, I'll be bringing the agreement back to council and get that approved so we can start moving forward with formal design of the project and move towards construction. Those are really the two, I guess, more interesting items that I have. It is tough to follow Chief Grady with construction stuff, but with that, if anybody has any questions, that'd be happy to answer them.
The Goblin Drive project?
Yes.
Can you briefly tell us as far as lanes and where it's up to the end and then?
The phase that we are going to be working on right now is just going to be the first phase. It'll be from the intersection with Industrial Park Road and including improvements to that intersection to a couple hundred foot short Baker Prairie. The federal money became available, we decided to go after it. One of the reasons, a couple of reasons we decided to go with that particular short phase was, one, the bridge is going to be one of the more expensive items and doing all of Goblin, so it's good to get that knocked out with federal help. And also, I didn't want to get into the Baker Prairie Nature Preserve with federal money involved. So that's what that first phase will be. We'll be widening that out to three lanes, sidewalks, proper drainage, significant intersection improvements, trying to help traffic flow better there. Now, future phases, we'll continue that project all the way to catch road. And my hope is to, once we get through design on this first phase, then we'll start kicking off design for that next phase, that when construction's done with phase one, we're ready to start moving into construction in phase two. Scheduling is going to be difficult, scheduling everything around school traffic, especially a bridge replacement. Typically, those require you either shut it down or you build a temporary bridge while you're working on it. So we've got a lot to work through as far as how we're going to do it and how we're going to try and keep traffic from being too bad out there at the schools and just the general public. It's a lot of, it's pretty heavy with Goblin Road.
Well, often citizens are asking me about the possibility of having more than a two-lane road, four-lane or whatever of Goblin Road and Baker Prairie is the consideration.
We will widen out to a minimum of three lanes at all sections except for Baker Prairie. There, we will make it back down to the two-lane as part of an agreement with the nature preservancy. There's no need for a three-lane through there. I would love to put a four-lane boulevard through that whole road. Unfortunately, we have some high-power transmission lines that we cannot afford to lift up. And so, the strength between those and the existing prairie and some other things will keep us from doing that. Now, as we're going through the schools, there'll be more significant improvements other than just a three-lane road to make those intersections and drives work a lot better. And we'll go through some public comment periods and get some information out to the public as once we move into the design on that part.
Thank you, Wade.
I really like the speed limit sign on Goblin Drive. Says, "Thank you or warning."
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Nice.
Yes, they are.
Okay, Chief Lowery.
I'm pretty used to the report for my department for the month. Again, I think I've kind of picked on Mr. Boswell last month about our, the last committee meeting about the getting us busy for out-of-city calls. But in April, we did respond to an unusual amount of out-of-city calls, very busy calls, about 17. And that ranged from anything from the couple of hickens at Hocksville Prairie to some pretty bad accidents out in the county, and then as well as trying to answer the medicals and the limited fires we had this month. This month, we've seen a little uptick in structural fires, one being an incendiary set fire last week, so we're working on that along with PD as well. Also, last month, we did some training, had some guys in Officer One class for a week. We also started the transition of the building inspectors moving over to the fire department. That's working along real well. We've got them training with Jeremy Johnson. So that's moving along. Literally the night after you all approved that, that he was gone to class, so he's training very hard. ISO, I think I mentioned that last time, ISO did come in April. We're looking for that report. The fire truck that was ordered is kind of looking at August right now for coming in, so hopefully we'll see some progress on that soon. This month, a couple of things I'd like to touch on. Well, last month also, we did go out and help Bergman and that and the sheriff's office and everybody with the tornado. That was a miracle to see what we seen and not have any injuries. That was unbelievable, the damage it had from literally south of Bergman to the hills, so our out-of-city. We went and assisted them as well. This month, unfortunately, we had to bury one of our own retired guys. Captain Jim McCamden passed away from a long battle with cancer. I'd like to be able to keep Molly and Zach and the family in prayers for losing Jim. He was a big asset and an important mentor to me as well, so we've done that. On the positive side, we did get a grant the other day for about 150 smoke detectors to hand out or to install, and so we can't hit them out. We got that through the Fire Protection Commission to the state. So we've been moving right along. Do you all have any questions or comments about anything that gives you?
I want to comment on one thing, Chief Lowery. He mentioned it briefly to you folks, but they constantly get calls to go out to the county, and it's not our responsibility. It's not something we have to do, but when we can help, we go. I think this morning, 4:00 this morning, you got a call and we're gone.
Yeah.
So there's a lot we do out in the county that goes unrecognized.
We try to be good neighbors and assist when we can. I mean, and all of our people know that we still have the city as our main priority, but we're also going to go and help when we're needed. You know, the hickens, that's a specialized training that not everybody can get. You know, the hickens, that's a specialized training that not everybody can get. We're fortunate to have some very talented guys who can do that, the high angle ropes, you know, switchwater stuff, those kind of things.
Good deal, Chief, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, now we got a special presentation by this guy Luke. He hasn't come around anymore. Last time he was up there.
Everyone, welcome to the Department Record. First one started out by saying congratulations to the Lady Goblins and the Goblins soccer teams for achieving its state. Lady Goblins actually finished with the state title. So congratulations to them. And the boys finished runner-up in a hard fought two to one game. And we're very proud of them as well. So congratulations to both teams, couldn't be happier for them. Also, just have one thing here for the accounting department, finance part of it. We were informed by municipal league recently that they are actually going to increase the premiums by 10% effective July 1st. They are allowed to do that by the contract. So eventually we will need to do some budget amendments to account for all those changes. The 10%, we kind of expected that because we did have a 400% loss ratio with the health insurance compared to premium paid. So we knew something might be coming soon and we thought maybe it might hold off to the end of the year, but they actually did it a little bit early. Like I said, they can do that according to their contract. It's more of an informational thing since it's going to have to happen. We've looked at other insurances, it's just not been worth this high. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to reach out with me. And again, we can do some budget amendments going forward probably next month. Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Luke? No? All right, David Wilson.
Okay, well, we've, about two or three weeks ago, I went to an IT Director's Conference in Louisville for the day, got to meet some other IT Directors from other parts of the state. It's the first one they've ever had. It's a good time to network and get some more information. So just want to share that. But everybody should have got an email and probably y'all on the council too, made me think about, about the security awareness training. According to Arkansas Legislative Audit, that's a recommended thing to do for all employees is to make sure they're aware of all the security, that they need to make sure they're, they're done with email. It's about a minute and a half videos. There's a, the total thing probably lasts about thirty, forty, forty minutes. Brian Bill Boswell's actually completed it. So I was trying to go in and see if he's completed it. But for security, for Legislative Audit, this is a good thing that they're requiring. And at the conference that day, they talked a lot about security awareness training. So this week, we've been building servers, getting ready, three servers for the transition for the police department onto the new, their software onto the new servers. And tomorrow, we're scheduled to do that. I've just been getting the servers ready for the last two weeks, just getting them ready so that we'll be ready to go hopefully tomorrow on that. So anyway, that's all the exciting stuff I have going on right now. Any questions for me? I'd be glad to do my best to answer them.
I have something else. I want to comment about David. And this is really exciting. Most of you haven't heard about this. I get a call about two weeks ago notifying me that there was a person that asked Siri what the population of Boone County was. Siri, what's the population of Boone County? Population is thirty-seven thousand blah, 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 and it's the national headquarters of the KKK. This is what came back. And they snapshotted that and sent it to me. I called David and he comes up and I said, "What can we do about this?" He said, "God, I don't know. Let me, let me make a call." He's got, you know, direct lines to the Google people and all those. He goes down and makes a call and he said, "Hey, I got, got rid of it. It's gone." And so we did it and sure enough, it's gone. So that is really, I love that.
That's not what you know it to, you know it's David.
Well, thank you, but I'm afraid, I don't want to burst everybody's bubble, but I think they've already got it back out there again.
You told me they, you told me they could.
They could because what it is, it's Wikipedia. And Wikipedia is content based, so anybody can go out there that's got an account and they can put that content out there. And actually, and I appreciate that Mayor Jackson, you saying that, but that was one of the battles we may face is that when you go out there, anybody, it's kind of a public site. Anybody go out there can edit it. So there's probably people out there that are going out there and editing and just watching that site all the time and seeing if it changes. So the more people that go out there and create accounts to edit Wikipedia, it's free. Go out there and you can go out there and remove it yourself, just create an account, go out there and edit that. And maybe we can overwhelm them with numbers, you know? So, but that's the only thing, that it is a public site where people are in charge of editing the data. So unfortunately, thank you very much, but I just, I didn't want people to be Googling their phone and all of a sudden see it. So if.
Well, can we make that his first pass every Monday one?
I meant to do it, I got busy on the servers, but yeah, that sort of thing, I'm going to try to go, just go out there and just edit it and remove it.
When we do that, Mitch, you got someone else that can track that.
I understand, I understand.
If somebody else may understand more about how Wikipedia works, but that's kind of what I found out in a nutshell this time.
Okay, well, thank you David, thanks anyway.
Nice to try.
Yeah, community, let's go down to committee reports. Joel?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. Then we're going to go right on to Big Daddy Mitch Manes.
Okay, in the finance committee, start off to piggyback what Luke was talking about with the health insurance. And for those, again, just to reiterate what he said, given our, our current payouts on claims, they have the right to come back and look for a mid-year increase, which they're doing. There'll be a 10% increase, as he said. Anything below 15% keeps us, can get set with what our grid is and what our current pay scale is. If you start getting above 15%, it puts us at risk for the amount that we're paying out. The wellness, we were supposed to get a discount from that on the premiums, but we were hoping also that it was over the amount of that experience rating with claims that were being put in there against the insurance policies. Obviously what we have happened, you don't want to tell people not to use their insurance, but in using it, it's going to force that cost up. So we're hoping to see a benefit of a reduction at some point with the wellness efforts that we're making. But because of that, again, there's going to be at least a 10% increase now, then they can actually come back at the end of the year. Since we've already approved the budget for benefits, we'll have to go back and approve a budget amendment from the mayor.
Okay, and Luke gets back?
Yeah, I'm going to get back and actually listen to what that amount's going to be. That's it for that item. The next thing is the longevity pay. Again, council, just to remind you, committee voted at the last committee meeting with a tie. So we voted essentially not to bring it, council put the mayor and put it on the agenda. And I will leave it to the mayor to discuss some of the things. Unless you want me to go over what Luke and I, and you have discussed, I'll leave it to you.
You go ahead.
Okay, what, what we had talked about was taking this, I feel that this will probably pass in the future, given the, the nature of the request, but the mayor and his thoughts about seeing this extended to all members of the city.
Excuse me a second, maybe we haven't talked. I want to bring that, that other part back in June.
Right. Right. And I, and I think the general, you know, the general discussion was whether we approve this or not, that we may want to table that because it wouldn't be given out until the end of the year anyway, fire and police. Obviously they would like to know they're going to get it, be given it now.
Sure.
But as Luke and I talked about it, you know, the, the general consensus between the three of us was you were looking at extending that to the rest of the city employees.
The fire and police right now have the money available in their budget. We have not located, Wade, Luke and myself have not located where we are going to get it for the rest. I believe we can, we just haven't really looked that hard. And over the next couple of weeks, we will, but that's why we can proceed with police and fire tonight.
Right. If, if there's a motion to do that, we can. And for the current year, they have the money in their budget and other places to approve.
That's correct.
Okay? So the expenditure to the city for this year will be the same. One of the questions that was brought to my attention, again, originally longevity pay was baked into the increases. So those individuals that are going to be getting longevity pay are essentially double dipping. It would, no one, not even Luke, is in favor of going back and lowering the grid to counter that change in strategy. So again, we're, we're left to the point for the current year, the money is available in a certain area of the budget. So with that said, I'll give it to you, Mr. Mayor, for any other comments? If anybody wants to give a comment.
No, I don't have any other comments, other than, you know, the longevity pay is going to start at ten years. Is that, is that correct?
That's right.
At ten years, whereas the STEP program runs out at ten and at five years for some others. So that's the.
And you, we might have Chief Lowery and Chief Grady speak to that, that change as far as ten years and again, remind council of the amount of money we're talking about for each year so everybody's clear.
Sure. Chief, do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Did everybody, I had, I had mine broke down. Did everybody get this? Yes. Did y'all get that on my left arm?
No.
You did not? All right. That's what I had mine broken down, right there. The longevity pay, as I spoke in the committee meeting, is something to reward our tenured officers for staying here. You know, I pointed out the STEP increase for ten years for a patrolman is a dollar and eighty-eight cents over ten years. They start out at sixteen eleven and they end up at seventeen ninety-nine. Unless they promote or, well, that's it. Unless they promote, they're not going to, there's, there's no incentive to stay. I've talked to several other departments that has longevity pay. Mountain Home was one of the ones I brought up to y'all, that they start out at fifteen ninety-five, which is a little lower than us, but by three years, their patrolman's up to nineteen fifty. So that's quite a bit above what our tenured patrolmen are at. And we've compensated that with the equipment, with the take-home units right now. I think, I think things are looking good. I think morale is good. I would, I would just, something that they had and was kind of pulled from underneath them, like I said, not y'all's fault, lack of communication, prior administration, you know, can't do nothing about that. I've got the money in, in the police budget to do this without asking for any other money from the city general. And I feel confident that, that money would be well spent to retain our tenured officers. And basically, it was a Christmas bonus every year. It was always headed out at the Christmas party. So I would just like y'all to give consideration to our more tenured officers and, and reward them with this longevity pay.
Any questions, questions? Chief Lowery, you want to comment?
Go along the same lines as Chief Grady says, that, you know, we've worked together and talked about it. Committee, I handed y'all out the sheet for ours, where we're going to do it, what it's going to cost, et cetera. You know, I think that these, these people have tenures. Our pay scale's a little bit different. Some of our upper officers are topping out at seven years. And I'm, again, I wasn't around when that was created. I don't know, there's reasoning behind that, I just, I just don't know why. So there, again, there's more reason that I would like to implement it as well for that. Because our, our firemen top out at ten and then it starts topping out less, so. Is there any questions on mine? I don't have it with me, I don't know if everybody's got their, but it was basically fifteen thousand out of our budget. And we had some, some duplicate items listed in the new equipment. And that's where the majority, it's all going to come out of the equipment line item because there's some, some items that, frankly, I didn't understand why it was in there.
In view of this additional information concerning the other city, other employees of the city, I make a motion that we activate the longevity, longevity pay for the police and fire. But that's the only reason, it's because of the information that I received about the other departments.
Yeah, Mary Jean, well, I won't, I won't go there.
Go ahead.
No.
That's all right, I can take it.
Yeah, thank you for that. We have a motion and a second discussion.
When will this be paid?
I'm sorry?
When will this be paid?
It would be paid in December.
Is this just for this year and the next year we relook at it?
It would be permanent.
Maybe redoing the scale, but now you're saying no? Is that what I understood?
This would be a permanent, other than we can always pull it back if need be. That's the understanding by both departments.
That, hold on, that's not correct because we're making a move in a budget and that's not a permanent move.
Well, that's true, year to year because of the budget.
It's going to be on, it's got to be on your budget.
It would be in next year's budget also.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, that I, I know Chris and I had anticipated putting a line item in there and then at budget time.
Yeah.
Do what we need to.
Exactly.
This would only be, you're correct, for this year, only taking it from another budget line to pay this.
But our hope is to continue.
But as part of the budget process, Luke is already prepared to just become a budget item, should the council want to add that to the budget, should the mayor, council, should the mayor want to add that to the line item for the departments.
And that was, that was what we discussed that committee also.
Right. Because, again, this year, they're taking money from another item, but in there, it's currently not in the budget and, you know, we're just moving it around. So the mayor in presenting the next budget will have to approve that and that's when the discussion for the further ones will occur.
Yeah, next year, that other item doesn't need to be in there.
Right. And the mayor and I have discussed that in, at length, and I need to make a couple of comments to, to your point. You know, there was, there's some idea that some members, and I will speak for Wade and some of his employees at Public Works, and I know Luke's employees feel the same way, that it's kind of, they got a raise back then and now they're getting longevity pay. So they, some of those employees, it's hard from a route, on the route standpoint to not feel like they've been overlooked a couple of times. Now, that being said, Luke is not opposed to this simply from a standpoint of being rigid and inflexible. His responsibility, his fiscal responsibility to the citizens and to the city government, he's doing that based on what he knows. He's not opposed to people giving an increase in pay. Okay? So he's just not being inflexible. This is his responsibility to, to point out and say, "This is what I was instructed and this is what I'm going to do."
Luke is just doing his job and a very good job. And you would do the same thing if you were in his position. We might not, we're not trained like you and Luke are. That's what we have, you and Luke.
Okay, so we have.
So there's others that we're discussing, particularly those that are coming out of city works, that we're going to see if we can find them a longevity pay?
No.
Are we going to find them a longevity pay?
Yeah.
This year?
Yeah, yeah, I hope so.
No, that's the wrong answer. I don't want to hear, "I hope so." We're going to find it.
We're going to find it, but I'm going to present it to you in June during the committee meeting.
And that's fine.
Yeah, not, it has nothing to do with this meeting. I think Mitch brought it up and Mary Jean brought it up and that's how it came into play with this. There, there's a, a belief that, that the money is there available, that we're going to have excess income this year due to a couple of things. But I wanted to get that in order and present it properly in June and not mix it up with this.
And to that point, in the discussions with the mayor, Luke and myself, I think you're correct. I think the money will be there. If at any time you say, you know, there's a possibility of pay increases or longevity pay or whatever, additional benefits, what people hear is there's going to be additional pay. They don't hear the major, or they don't hear the mic. You know, for them, it's a hundred percent. For the person paying it, it's always, you know, forty to eighty percent, somewhere in that. But I do, I do believe, Mr. Boswell, that we'll do that.
Yeah, and, and it won't be presented as a hope. It'll be presented, here's what we've got, and here's why we have it, but that'll happen next month.
If you're trying to convince me, it's not going to happen.
If I'm trying to, help me out.
Okay. My issue is this, I have nothing against police and fire getting a longevity, at all. My issue is, is these guys that work in City Works have never had longevity.
That's correct.
Never.
That's correct.
Okay? As long as I've been on this council, and the other term I was on, we also had these same discussions, and that issue for longevity pay from these guys that, you know, and I'll just use a prime example, answered the water break at the hotels two weeks ago tonight. We have a community full of baseball and softball teams from all over the state of Arkansas, you know, put their tail on the line to get that water problem solved, so these people that are here can go on with their lives.
That's part of my presentation next month.
And so, my point is this, do we have to do it tonight? Or can we wait until we meet in June? Because if they're not getting the money until the end of the year, I'd like to see it be a package deal, regardless where the money comes from, so these guys feel like they're, they're not just a hope, but it is going to happen. These guys got their money. And again, I'm not against that, but these guys never got their money, ever. And the whole time I've been around here, never have they got a longevity pay at City Works. Is that correct, Wade?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of. And that's, that's my point, is, is I'm not against it, I just think we need to better handle how we're going to get there. And you're creating a situation where, yes, you've got lots of people you want to hang on to, Chris, don't blame it. Same way, Mark, you've got some great firemen, you've got to hang on to it. You've got to give them things to hang on to. But these guys over at City Works, who just retired, three of them, but had better than twenty-five years each, some way up in their thirties, and never saw a longevity pay. That's my point.
Call for a vote. I'm sorry, call for a vote. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Let's do a roll call.
I do have one thing, just while we're talking before the roll call, what is the hurry? I, I agree, why don't we make everybody feel the same and do it? If you're so sure it's going to go through, then if it doesn't, we can revisit this, but I don't understand the hurry tonight to rush it through. The vote was split last, two weeks ago. And going to...
I don't think there's any sense in rushing it through. I think we're just going through the process, but...
So, we're going to go to June?
There's no, we can do it. It doesn't matter to me, other than the two chiefs, they presented it.
The reason I voted no in committee, in the committee meeting, was I felt that it was unfair to the other city employees.
Right.
But after the additional information that they too will be included, I did, I sponsored them, approved the longevity pay.
Still not guaranteed they're going to get it, the other city employees.
And the reason, the only reason I really want to wait till June is because I think you folks, hearing the numbers from Luke mean a little more than hearing them from me. Does that make sense? And, I mean, I, I know what I'm going to say next month, but it's a matter of Luke being here, and I'd like Luke to present it, and also agree and confirm what I present. So, that's why we're holding on to them till next month. But either way, and I don't think the chiefs are going to matter, if it doesn't pass tonight, we can come back next month. But I guess we proceed at this time with roll call? Okay, thank you, roll call, Joe.
Joel Williams.
Yes.
Wayne Kohn.
Yes.
Chris Ed.
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
No.
Linda DeWolfe.
No.
Phil Boswell.
No.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
So, we get five to three?
Five to three. Five to three, I'm passive.
Yep.
Okay, thank you guys very much for that, and then next month, we'll move forward. We'll get it done for the other guys. Mitch, you want to start with that?
Yeah, I spoke with Luke Brickley and more in depth with Wade in regards to this. For those of you that don't know, the Presley's home that made national news a couple of years ago with our sinkhole in their yard, and just outside of it, some of it was county property, some was in city property, and we've starting to experience a problem again. So, I'll let Wade speak to that in just a moment, and then make a few comments, specifically Wade, as to why that we would be spending money in just this, on behalf of this one general area within the city.
We'll kind of go over, there's, there's a lot of ways to approach this, we'll go over a couple of options. One would be for us to mobilize back on site, similar to what we did last time, excavate what we know is a problem, and go back with proper fill, various sizes of stones, and I'm not going to go into the details. That would be the quickest, cheapest solution that we could do right now, as, as far as the city goes. Each of you have at your desk a proposal from, from a company called Geo Engineers. They are a group that specializes in these type of work, and they're geologists primarily, but they also have some geologists that are engineers as well, and many of them are PhDs. They've offered a proposal to do a subsurface investigation in the area, the immediate area of that sinkhole, so that we can get an idea of what's going on in the ground. You know, with the first option, we can go in, get it fixed, it all looked good, Presley's, you know, have a nice yard again, but there's always the possibility in karst topography, like, like what the Ozarks is, that there's other voids under there that we're not going to be able to see without doing an investigation. Last time, we had a, a geotech, geotechnical firm come in with some boring equipment, and they did some, mainly, we were actually trying to locate the rock ledge at the Presley's house, is on, and we got that verified, and, and so, but when you're doing boring, it's, it's kind of limited to, you're only seeing a snapshot shot of everywhere you put that board down. Geo engineers will come in with a technology, and kind of, it's not a good analogy, but it's the best one I can come up with, is we're going to take x-rays or CAT scans of the ground to get an image of what's under there, to locate more voids. If we do have organic materials such as trees and stomps that were pushed down and used as fill material when that subdivision was built, try and get an idea of what we're dealing with, if this is going to be a long-term problem, or if this is something that we're going to be able to fix right now. Their cost, their, their proposed cost to do the work immediately around the existing sinkhole is sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So, that's what it would cost for them to come down, bring their equipment, do that subsurface investigation. One other issue has come up, it does appear a little bit upstream from the Presley's property where this, this sinkhole has been, has occurred, there is also an area where it appears some water may be going underground. I asked them to give me a separate quote or an additional price to do an investigation up there, and that was four thousand two hundred dollars, to do the, to do the, what they call a geophysical investigation. I can't say for sure that the water that appears to be going underground upstream is causing the problem at the sinkhole, but it certainly could be one of the main causes. It could just be exacerbating a situation that's completely independent. So, with that, that would be the kind of cost we would be looking at to, to get an idea of what we're dealing with. That's not going to include any of our work to go in and remedy it, remedy it at that time. And it's going to be, and I can't really give you an estimate right now, because I don't know how much we're going to have to execute. As far as to what Councilman Magnus mentioned, why would we be doing this? This is private property. This is not located on City Right of Way, City Esmond, or anything like that. And we, we have to be very careful about what we do on private properties, because this is public money. It is not uncommon, though, for cities to, to go in, take control of a scene like this, on private property with these type of sinkholes. Springfield deals with them, I think, on a fairly regular basis. We're a similar geology, so we're pretty lucky we've not dealt with any more than what we have. It's, it becomes a public safety hazard at that point. It really, it's up to, you know, the local government, whether that's a municipality, a county, or, or even if you could get the state involved, that's really the only people you're going to be seeing that's got the resources to go in and do that. Your average homeowner's not going to have the resources to deal with something like this on their property, so it's basically just going to continue to be a public, a public safety issue, and could potentially get worse if nothing's done.
Isn't there, the geotech firm that was, that did that work before, didn't they tell us that there was risk all the way past overdrive of a continued degradation of the...
There is, there is. A lot of that is because of the geology in this region. And it's also because, and I don't, I don't remember that drive tree before all of that was built. I've talked to some of, some of the people that have lived in the area, that are familiar with that area. That used to be a full creek down there. It was filled in at one point in time. So, that's never a good idea to begin with. And then also, if they were just using the trees and, and brush and things that were cut down and cleared for the streets, cleared for the lots, and they were just pushing that down the hill and put it in there, that's organic, it's going to rot over time and create those voids in the ground. So...
What are you going to wire those by? Why don't you...
Pardon me? So, to, to...
Please, to when Chris will show me your demo.
I'm glad it's done, it didn't go off.
That's right, there you go.
A little bit this way?
Why you thought that Luke over behind you, Mitch?
Okay.
Sorry, Chris.
Any questions for Wade?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Wade, has this, is it topography, or is it aerial photography of some kind that x-rays the ground? And could something like that be done over a region?
It's not done aerial, you know, it's not done over an entire region, it's equipment on the ground that they use.
It's not aerial.
Wade told me it was essentially a CAT scan of the ground.
That's the best analogy I can come up with. It's, it's a lot more complicated than that, and I don't think they like using that analogy, but it helps me, so... But basically, and I, I probably should have printed out a picture to show you guys of what these, these investigations do, but they kind of, they give you like a 3D rendering of what you're looking at underground.
There's five homes in that area.
Yeah.
So, the, the, right now, we're looking at the, the Presley home and property, but it could, it could cause an issue that there be other homes in that area, for sure.
Yeah, you have, you have four properties that are really immediately in that city.
And ironically, one of the properties at risk is two or three arbers that we have all the problem with.
Well, we got a solution.
I'm going to warn you, we could be peeling off the first layer, but I'm not excited to find out what we're doing still in the ground, but I am concerned that if we just go in, fill the hole, and move out, and move on, we'll be right back here too.
This company's reputation with Wade, and I talked about this yesterday in our meeting, is that they've done all the work on Top of the Rock, with their sinkhole on the golf course.
Yeah, they were one of the consultants involved with Top of the Rock. They do a lot of work with the city of Springfield, and, you know, this is just their local office that I'm dealing with. They're actually a national firm based out of the northwest, so they, they, they're some of the main experts in this area that we can, we can find.
So, you have an option here, Mr. Mayor, asking for a motion, you wish for the sixteen, what, fourteen-five, or sixteen?
Sixteen-five to investigate the sinkhole, another forty-two hundred to go upstream with the equipment and see what we've, we've got going on, what water is going underground.
No pressure, what would your recommendation be?
You know, my recommendation is that we go ahead and spend the money in turn, before we get back there in two years.
I'll make a motion.
Second, for the sixteen thousand...
No, sir, three-five, like, twenty, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Okay. So, we have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Any comments out there? Let's do it, a roll call on this one, I'll stand.
Yes.
Chris Ed.
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe.
Yes.
Phil Boswell.
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Joel Williams.
Yes.
I don't know where she cares.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Wade.
When will they start?
I'll have to contact them tomorrow, so they seem optimistic they'd get down here pretty quick, but schedules...
If you're not aware, Wade's people have went out and removed the storage shed out of the hole for them, so that's out.
Mr. Presley needed to know his yard to get it, so he needed to...
If you haven't been out there, it's, it was quite a two dollars. This big old building looks like a little TV Monopoly house, but it was quite a deal.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, I'm...
That's all you have, Mitch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's go on Linda.
Um, good, welcome.
Okay, good. Ms. Krieger.
I'm glad to be here, thank you, director.
Okay. And I'm sure Mr. Boswell will have...
What I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, if we may, is bump the two items that we need action for. I think Wade's report in regards with the highway department, that's all this will be a little lengthy. The other two are more or less housekeeping chores in regards to the grant resolution for the sidewalks on the Katz Road. We have a, a resolution in effect to approve that, to apply for the federal grant.
Okay. Do you have a picture of that? Yeah, the picture's up there now.
Yeah. That's sidewalks on both sides of the, on Katz Road, from Highland all the way to Galway Drive, which is a good thing. Eighty-twenty matching grant, correct?
It's an eighty-twenty, and I, and I just, I want to temper expectations a little bit. I mean, we're going for both sides of the road, we might not get it this time around. We're going to get as much as we can and do as much as we can, but if we're asking, we might as well ask for the full rate.
So, I would make a motion that we approve the request to apply for grant.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
I have one question, Wade, if you do get this one side, are you going to do the north side or the south side?
It's going to depend on how much we do get. The, the south side is going to be the more difficult from dealing with drainage, so it will likely be the most expensive. So, the north side will become the more likely candidate, because if we're looking at... I would prefer to do the south if we do...
And if we do the north, we have to jump up into the yards and get easements, right? And that'll be okay.
Well, the north side is war one, the south side is war two.
Well, good. Yeah, that's right.
I would prefer not to go halfway on one side than switch sides.
Nothing like politics, is it?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The other...
And the other item we have, Mr. Mayor, is, is a cleanup contract with Orion Inland that should have been in place back the day that the city of Harrison went in. Contract with inland, but for whatever reason, it was not, and so, what it amounts to is at the beginning of one October, first of all, let me say, this is not a contract that will extend inland's contract out. This ends at the same time their current contract ends. But beginning the first of October, the city shall be entitled to receive all resource conservation fees for roll-off customers, and what it was with roll-off customer money from Orion was still put in that contract. That's where it has to...
I will make a motion to have the mayor sign that contract.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good deal, thank you.
Right, and then the other item we had, Mr. Mayor, is, is I'll let Wade take this, or you take this?
Oh, this is big, folks. You've been waiting for it, here it is. Come on, Wade.
This is good stuff on the...
It is.
I did lay out a copy of the letter from the Arkansas Department of Transportation that we received as well. It's also been put out on Google Drive for tonight's meeting. Okay, we had a meeting, month and a half... Okay, we had a meeting month and a half or so ago with some high-level people at the DOT to kind of go over how they're gonna be spending money on Highway sixty-five, what we want, what they think needs to be done. I mean, it was quite a bit of back and forth, it was a really good meeting, and we kind of came out, out with an agreed-upon plan, and we're waiting for this letter to verify everything that... We can agree on everything in principle, but till we see it in writing, it actually starts to, it, it, that's all it is. So we've got the letter. Basically, they had an X amount of dollars that were already programmed to be spent along sixty-five in that area. Uh, that was about eight point, eight point three-five million dollars. We've, we've come up with a plan of projects to, something, uh, came up with a plan of projects to spend that eight point three-five, and I'm gonna kinda go over the list. One is the Highway forty-three Rock Springs and sixty-five, a project that we've already been working on. That was a partnership project between the city. It actually had city funds, state funds, as well as federal funds. We're out on that, and we're not spending any money. I had been holding on to up to a million dollars of infrastructure money to help...
This really surprised us, because we were willing to participate, and they said, "We'll take it all."
Yeah, it's, it's one of those projects, they didn't, I, I think initially gone into it, if you look at some of the numbers they put in the original transportation improvement plan for this project, they didn't realize how big that this project is gonna grow. I don't think they had a full graph of the utilities, um, stuff like that. Of course, it's, it's hard for them in the early planning, working out later on to get everything. I think that as they got more into it, they saw the need for the project, they realized that this is, you know, it's Highway forty-three, Highway sixty-five, for the most part, these are DOT roads, highways that, that they're maintaining, so. So now they're taking full control of that. Uh, we're also going to be moving forward with improvements at the intersection, Industrial Park, Main Street, the bypass sixty-five there, it's what we call the North Interchange. That will be a very significant project. Their, their current estimates for that are two point five million dollars. Um, and one thing I wanna point out, that these estimates that are in this letter are for basically the construction of the job. They do not include right-of-way or utility locations. Uh, that comes from a whole different pot of money that doesn't really come into play when they're laying out these...
But it's coming from them.
Yeah, it's coming from them. And then, we will also continue to move forward at, with intersection improvements at Forward Drive, Esther, as well as Walmart Drive. And then included in all of these projects is going to be coordination of all those signals through that corridor, to where they communicate and, you know, it's not perfect, but it will certainly help the flow of traffic, having all of those signals coordinated and not at times competing with each other as far as where traffic's moving through. All of that adds up to five point three-five million of that program money. The additional three million that, that they've got available, we have asked and they have agreed to go ahead and start on a project widening portions of the existing bypass to get that, to start getting that headed in the right direction, a little bit safer, a little bit easier to drive, as well as addressing the drainage issues, getting some sidewalks, pedestrian movements allowed across there. So that would be the current money that's in place, and those projects are going to be moving forward. Once you fill in right-of-way utilities, this is well, well in excess of the ten million, probably gonna be even more than a twelve million dollar investment in the sixty-five corridor from the DOT in town, which is nice. I like, I like them investing in the roads here instead of elsewhere. Now, going back to, was it last year? Last year, we had made the proposal to the highway department to partner with them on improving the existing bypass, getting it safer, widening on things to, nobody likes how narrow the lanes are out there. That money is still in play. What they're gonna do with that is, for the next statewide transportation improvement, they're gonna take that to the commission. The hope is to leverage that two and a half million to get the twenty...
Twenty-two more million.
Yeah, the twenty-two more million that will be necessary, according to their estimates, to go ahead and fix the rest of the bypass.
Yeah, this was a part that I was really impressed with the way Wade handled this, because it was hard to turn down that two and a half million, 'cause they would have given, given that to us right now to use on our bypass.
Yeah, they did offer, saying, and, and they said, you know, "Once we had that eight point three-five," they said, "Once we fill in your two and a half, we got this much."
Yeah, but Wade said, "I wanna keep that, because that's gonna help us get that twenty-two in a few years."
Yeah, I don't necessarily wanna leverage two and a half million for eight million when, when we're...
Yeah.
The goal was to leverage a much larger amount of...
And that'll help us, knowing we have that two and a half million already there for this next project, it'll help us get that next project, and that'll be an even bigger one. But this is, this is well over ten million...
Yeah.
That we're gonna, we're gonna get, and it's gonna start next year.
Yeah, I, I do, the, of course, I guess what, next month, they're gonna hold a public hearing for, um, the intersection of forty-three and Rock Springs, and my understanding is they are now moving forward with the design on the other portions of this project, so yeah, it's, we'll start seeing work next year, and it will probably carry through another two, three years, and before it's all said and done.
That was a big day for us, it was...
Mr. Mayor, can you, uh, one thing you mentioned in the meeting that I'd like for everybody else here, how well received you were at the, at the head for...
Yeah, I was shocked. We go down to a building with several thousand people in this building, and, you know, I puff a lot, Wade is all about exact, he's an engineer, you know, but there were several thousand people, and when we get to the garden, "Oh, yes, sir, they've been waiting for you." And they courted Wade and I up to the eleventh floor, which, which nobody goes to that floor, and he kind of knew that, he hadn't been there, but he knew that. And then we get down there, and we got the three top decision-makers in the state ready to meet with us, and, and they were, I don't know, it just blew me away that day, how professional they were. They had that whole room with big maps, I'm talking about eight by eight feet of every little part of Harrison. They knew what they were talking about, and they were ready to do a deal, and...
It was a good meeting, I think they were ready to get something in place, so we, I would stop pestering them maybe, that's...
Yeah, and we have learned, you gotta pester them, so.
Now, and, and the DOT has been very responsive. I've, I've seen over the last several years, they're, they are much more responsive to the needs and requests of cities, and it's, it's extremely welcome to see that. They're doing a great job, but we're excited to be working with them.
That day they did, anyway, we'll see what they do next day, because, you know what our little city pays out in tax, state tax? It's like twenty-seven million dollars a year, just sales tax, that goes to the state. Twenty-seven million. That's a lot. So now we're on to the next ten million. Good deal, thank you.
That's all I have.
Back to you. Okay, well then, let's go down to, uh, Mr. Ed.
Yes, tonight, first I'd love for discussion and this thing rolling through is the business license.
I'll make a motion that we put, uh, the business license ordinance on its second reading by title of...
Second.
An ordinance for Jillian replacing ordinance thirteen thirty-seven of the City Council of Harrison regarding the city business license.
Uh, let's see here, I am, second, oh, roll call, you're asking for, is that correct? Roll call. Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Say it again?
We're good.
Okay, okay, that's the end of that.
All right, the next thing that we have is, uh, Smad is dealing with the alcohol ordinance, and I'm gonna defer to Jeff to give us some context on that.
This is really a cleanup of several ordinances over the years that we have done, amending our alcohol ordinance. It's really, nothing has really changed, except to spell out a couple things that, uh, getting rid of some specific numbers when one of our ordinance stipulates that we're gonna charge half of what the state charges for our license fees, that kind of thing. The only thing that really changed, uh, from the, from all the ordinances in this is the way that we collect the supplemental, uh, we're wanting to do the supplemental on the, uh, off-premise beer and wine to be collected every six months instead of monthly. We have a lot of corporate people that are having to, having to put together and send us a check for two dollars, three dollars. It's such a hassle for them, they really would like to, you know, because it, it just doesn't amount to a huge number for some of our, our corporate people that are, are collecting this. So what we've asked to do, instead of the annual license, we've ran the numbers and tried to figure out about what it all equals out to, instead of doing it for fifteen dollars, like we've been doing, we're doing it a hundred and seventy-five dollars, uh, a year for the license, and then that hundred and sixty, that, that, for that license fee, that will cover the first thirty thousand dollars in sales that the business collects a year. We will send out a report, or a request for, for a report in November, and then again in May, to these businesses, asking for their sales for May through October, and then November through April, so that we can then, um, see if it, and then, as part of that report, it stipulates anything over thirty thousand dollars, you would then start paying one-half of one percent, uh, supplemental fee.
For that last six months.
For, for whatever timeframe, you know, like, you know, some of the bigger ones, like Walmart, it ain't gonna take 'em very long to get past those thirty thousand dollars in sales, but we've got quite a few that they'll barely do thirty thousand in a whole year, and, so basically, we're collecting upfront, they're not having to do the paperwork as much throughout the year. So it really, dollar-wise, has not changed anything. It's just trying to come up with a, uh, an idea that will help them not have to go through so much hassle on Marion, and this comes in from a, uh, a request from your local ABC board.
We, uh, need a motion to place it on the ordinance on its first reading by title of...
I'll make that motion.
Second. Second, can you roll call? Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cone?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Harrison City Code Title four point four zero and all subsequent amendments to regulate alcoholic beverages and declaring an emergency.
I do need to request that we suspend the rules and pass it in its entirety tonight, because the annual license comes up due the end of June.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules and place it on its second reading by title of...
Second.
Roll call.
Was that second, third reading, or just...
Second and third.
I forgot who all left out with. Mary Jean did that. Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cone?
Yes.
Chris Ed?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Harrison City Code Title four point four zero and all subsequent amendments to regulate alcoholic beverages and declaring an emergency.
And we need a motion for...
Move up.
Okay.
Need a motion for an emergency clause first, and should be, it should be in and prior to the motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we enact the emergency clause.
Motion?
Second.
Second, roll call. That's the process, unfortunately.
Already forgotten.
We know we're going through this.
Yes.
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 Mary Jean?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to the doc.
Second.
Not according to this. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, we're getting close to the end here, folks. We've gotten through yours, Chris. I, I wanna share with you under, I'm gonna put it under new business, but I'd like you to consider, uh, maybe we work together, maybe even with Mark and myself, I'd like to create an ordinance or make it part of maybe the business license, the commercial business license, for a commercial clean premises. We have that for residential, but we don't have anything for the commercial. And what I've learned over the last couple of months, we go out every Wednesday, and we call on yards, and we've made a lot of progress in that area, but when you find a commercial person, there's nothing we can do, and they're always on a main drag, so they're extremely visible, and I can think of a couple right now, but we have nothing to enforce, so I'm hoping you can consider something, maybe to, maybe we talk about it in June, and come up with some way to enforce them to take action.
Chris, why don't you let me do background check on that for you, and see if I can find it for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you were saying something, Chief?
Just for, good for thought, I've got a copy of it, and we're doing some research on it now, but they have the property maintenance code, it's a, the model code from our existing state fire, fire prevention code, um, that we're researching now, and I may bring to the committee to look at that, to entertain, that may be a, the solve for some of these things that we don't have in the legislature right now.
Okay, think that will address that?
I believe so, um, but we'll, we'll bring it up, 'cause I don't know if we need, I don't know what's in there that we may already have covered, you know, I need to compare it to see what we've got, but I'll try to get that kind of rounded up, I think.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanna comment on a few things that Duran Center, I just got a text from Dr. Esters, said he talked to the appraiser, and he said he should have something next week. We're still on hold with that, but hopefully something soon on how we need to proceed in getting the Duran Center. Spring cleanup ends tomorrow, it's gonna be over in your ward and Ward Four, and they've done a great job. Orion's done a great job, because we haven't heard anything. I know things are cleaner, they are a lot cleaner in town, but they've done a good job.
Mr. Mayor, I did have some members of Ward Two, and I didn't have to mention this, Mr. Wall, we've had a number of people see the roll-offs up in three and four, and wondered why we didn't give that in, uh, in one and two.
Our initial plan was to, and it never even got to four, because when we dropped it in three, nobody put stuff in there. It was almost empty after that week, and so we realized if it wasn't gonna be used, there was no reason to bring it any, it was a good idea.
It was a good idea, and I've had three citizens that wanted to ask about it.
Yeah, something else that was interesting, they allowed people to take stuff there, or if it, something was missed and they called in late, they would run back and pick it up.
Good.
I mean, this is just really worked good, I gotta give them, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity to say good things about Inland, but this was, this was one of them.
I'm not so sure of the roll-off, still not a good idea.
It, it, it makes sense, but when you pull one up there and it's empty after a week...
But it's, it's something new, I mean, that's out of the norm, because it's always been in the past to, to pick it up, right?
Well, next year, we're gonna do it all in one week also, we're not gonna have four different weeks, it's gonna be one day for each ward, get it done, so.
I know, that'll be interesting.
Yeah, I know, it's, uh...
I know driving around Ward Four, there's still a lot of stuff sitting in yards.
In Ward Four?
Yeah.
And that's, that's tomorrow. And that's, that's tomorrow.
Well, Ward Four's already done.
No, no, Ward Four.
Ward Four's a little high.
Yeah.
No, you're correct. You're correct.
There's still a lot of stuff in yards.
Well, if you see something, let us know or call Christine because she'll call them and they'll come, they'll come get it. Not like in past years where they would say, you know, we were there and we're done, but they'll come get it right now.
I can make you a list.
Yeah, do that. Make me a list and, um, there's somebody in your neighborhood that's cleaning up big time and it's going to be, it's going to be great and that stuff. Recycling, a big, big item. Mr. Tennyson was out today putting on labels, as you all know, we got these labels. We recruited volunteers a week ago last Monday and we had 27 volunteers show up that day.
We have one here tonight.
Oh, we do, yeah, Ms. Pence. And we knocked out one ward that morning and that was great. So since that time, what we've done is some smaller teams have come in and gotten a small section to go out and put these on. Mr. Bogardner, we were going to do, we are going to do next week, a, a little video that we can run on Facebook to instruct people how to get these if they don't have one yet. We've also talked to FedEx and they're going to, I, I believe they're going to come through and offer a lot of volunteers and help us with this also. They have a department, not only, it's called FedEx Cares, but they're focusing on green right now. So this was perfect. And I think Linda's still going to take care of a lot of her ward, so we'll see, but.
Wednesday, we're looking for volunteers Wednesday. In the morning at 8:30 at my house.
Yeah, Mary Jean's recruited some people.
And we'll be out. And we'll have donuts and coffee at 9:00, get straight.
This is going to be great.
And we'll be putting.
Killing your lawn.
Pouring beer on Wednesday.
I mentioned earlier the clean premises. We really only have a handful of really bad yards out there right now. So much of Harrison looks really good and if you drive around, you'll try and find a real bad yard. There's not a lot. We're focusing, uh, the Public Works Department, Ralph Jones and a few of us are focusing on those and a few of them we're going to have to be tough with. But we have to. We have a responsibility to the community to clean them up and no other option. Park and Parks and Rec, Scott Tennyson, thanks for sitting here all night for this little bleep and he came, he is, I'd like to appoint him to be a commissioner on Parks and Rec. That's a five-year term. I would like your approval.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
Take the box and roll.
All right. We also have Bo Phillips. Bo took over a spot for another commissioner and he would like to stay on another five years and I've spoken with Bo.
Second.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, I was told to announce, I got one other thing. Fiddlers are in town. Somebody wanted me to announce that. They're in town the rest of the week. If you haven't been up to the college, I guess it's, it's quite a thing. The other thing I want to talk about is safe rooms. I think that was mentioned tonight or request, ask if we had any safe rooms. I had a Tuesday, it started blowing up on Facebook and we received some calls about where do people go when they're expecting a tornado? You know, over the last month, the whole country here Midwest has been bad, but for some reason Tuesday, the expectation was Harrison was going to get hit. And so that kind of went off and I started looking into that. I get ahold of Mark right away and he kind of handles all the emergency things and he tells me we don't have any official shelters in town. And the reason is to comply with feds, it's just almost impossible to build. So I called the school too and talked to Dr. Pratt. Dr. Pratt, the schools doesn't have any. They do have some rooms that are identified to where the children go. They're not the official safe rooms that, that they would like to have. They have applied for grants, federal grants, but they've done that for several years, so.
Mr. Mayor, as a part of that, I'll say to give some background on that, they did apply. It was going to cost them $2 million, but they're supposed to get $800,000 from the federal government. That grant was denied. And one of the reasons was the hazard mitigation plan that was not completed for that.
Well, I'll be darned. Maybe you're going to help us with a safe room, but I'll, thank you Mitch, but I was surprised when Dr. Pratt explained that to me. Today, Mark and I, because, you know, we thought, what do we do? What do these people do that are in a, a one-story house without a basement or in a mobile home? Not only the city, but the county also, if they need to go somewhere and they get a 10-minute notice, they're working to get hit. So they have their pastors across the street every once a month. So we went over there today and we proposed, actually Heath was there, he's a pastor and he.
Without a basement though.
They, we proposed that they consider identifying a church in four different areas of Harrison that we can communicate to the public, here's a good church to go to and they would be open during those times. So we kind of left it up to them. If they get back to us and identify those church, Chief Lowery, when the emergency comes, we'll try to communicate that the best we can. At least it's a plan and an option. Another thing Chief Lowery went through this week was during Tuesday, which it looked like we could get hit, he had some people concerned because we didn't turn on the sirens and that's his responsibility and he knew and we knew that Harrison was not in danger. And because of that, you don't do it. But I know again, that people felt we were in danger, but we weren't. So that's.
Let me ask, Glenn's back here. Glenn, uh, you're over there throwing out the Red Cross kind of, does that Red Cross already have in effect a group of churches that they can go to?
I do not know the answer that way.
We, when I was on Red Cross, we did in the county. We had churches for the company. So we might want to work with OEM and Red Cross and see what they're going to, they have set up.
We'll do that. We'll see what the churches have to say. Kind of, I was hoping they would kind of move, put something together. None of the pastors that are there knew anything about that, I don't think this morning, so.
Yeah, I know for a year when I was with Red Cross, we had a list of churches that they picked up to.
And that's all I have is there. Oh, we do have one other thing. Thank you, Jeff. Public Works and three people retired and these are long time people. We went over and Wade gave them all plaques, we cooked lunch. I think Public Works, Bill, Public Works themselves, I was told paid for and cooked the lunch.
Yeah, we took up a collection.
We took up a collection and it was a great, there were probably 100 people there.
Oh yeah, it was a great turnout.
Yeah, real good turnout, families and the people and, and we're talking about Lloyce, Bruce and Jeremy Johnson and they're gone.
Unfortunately, we're losing all three.
Losing all three here.
Lloyce, Lloyce and Bruce will be done at the end of this month, which is quickly approaching and then Jeremy will be here through the end of June. So a lot of experience that we're losing, but we'll do it replaced.
And there goes a lot of history.
Yeah, we want to thank them and our best.
And it was really a nice.
Yeah, bother.
One quick thing and I apologize for not getting this to you. I simply want to extend to the entire city of Harrison, specifically the administration and all the departments, a great thanks for making our crawdad days this past Friday and Saturday such a success, even though it was shortened by something that we had no control over. In particular, I want to thank both the chiefs and their departments. They absolutely performed marvelously from starting with planning back last year all the way through the conduct of the event on Friday and Saturday. Police and fire and the teams were there 24/7. They did a phenomenal job. I want to make sure that everybody understands that. And a group that seldom gets acknowledgement, but I'll tell you, we could not have done this without Wade and the Public Works Department. You know, attending the city council meeting three months ago, the question was, can we ever recover from the floods and the damage done to even have crawdad days? We were with one capability and that's Wade and his guys. They absolutely performed. Hey, I want to extend one other thank you to David in his IT department. The chamber has some IT needs. David volunteered to serve as a member of a small task force to help us define what those needs were and to review some proposals. So David, thanks so much for doing that. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you and thanks for all your hard work over there in crawdad days. Anybody else got anything you want to say or? Motion to adjourn?
No.
Thank you all.